I'm going to call the January 21st Board Meeting to Order and ask everyone to please arise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn?
Present.
Trustee Niradowski?
Present.
Trustee Ingraffia?
Present.
Trustee Keenly?
Present.
And Supervisor Sweeney.
Present. That doesn't count for a roll call vote, Sue Ellen's, but I'll take care of that right now. All right. Having a quorum, I would like if someone could make a motion to allow Trustee Saturn to participate electronically because she is recovering. Well, it's up to her. If you wanted to find the reason, I'll leave that up to you, Sue Ellen.
So moved.
Yes, I just had a knee replacement last week, so I'm still under home health care.
Okay.
So moved.
All right. Moved by Trustee Ingraffia.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Niradowski. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Any public comment? All right. You've had a chance to review the consent agenda. Any items that anyone would like to pull off the consent agenda?
Mike, I was wondering if we could do the bills separate. I'd rather not vote on them since I couldn't review them.
Oh, so since you didn't review them, that's fine.
Yeah.
All right. I will pull.
Thank you.
Yep. I will pull the payroll and bills off the consent agenda. All right. All other items under the consent agenda? Any other items to remove? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with payroll and the bills removed?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Ingraffia.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Niradowski. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn?
Aye.
Trustee Niradowski?
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney?
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve the payroll and bills as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Niradowski. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Keenly. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn?
Abstained.
Trustee Niradowski?
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney?
Aye. Okay. You have the minutes from the December 17th regular Board Meeting. Any questions or proposed changes to those minutes? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the December 17th regular Board Meeting minutes?
Make a motion.
Moved by Trustee Saturn?
Yeah. I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Niradowski. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. No presentations. Reports. Connie, the assessor's report.
You all received my written report. Nothing inordinate has changed since I wrote that report, but if you have any questions, I'd be delighted to answer them.
Any questions for Connie? All right. Thank you, Connie. Clerk's report, George.
You saw the clerk's report with the FOIA's. Paul, do you want to mention where we are with the attestation? The testing? You know, how we're doing that now?
Sure, I can. It's a long one. Just to advise where we are with that, from what we have been able to gather, and we've talked to our attorney, the attestation law that was passed recently was very generic, and the attorney felt that we could get this same thing accomplished, the intent of the law, with George as the clerk just signing on a report that attested to the bills that the supervisor had approved and that the board of trustees had approved previously. So there's not a need for the clerk to sign on every check as a second signature, as was done previously with the Highway Commissioner. Is that what you were looking for?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions for Paul or George?
You got, I just need a little more clarification too. Previously, what had appeared was going to have to happen, well, let's put it this way, the original, this bill was passed with the support of TOC or TOYA.
TOY.
TOY. Because of a need for transparency and because of an issue they had with the supervisor signing things at one, at some location that didn't, that she shouldn't have signed or didn't sign right, or whatever it was. And so they decided then, okay, every time the supervisor signs a bill or a check, it has to be attested by the clerk, which means that the clerk would have to come in every week to sign the checks or bill before they went out. And there was a lot of rigmarole and a lot of concern as to what really this meant. Do you really have to do that? What happens if I'm sick? What happens if I die? What happens if I'm on vacation? What happened? How do we do this? And we were looking at making him the deputy attester or something like that, but we didn't know if that would fly. And so now we've, now it's come back, attorney said, do this, try this, and if they define it, what he explained, and now if they define it more clearly a month or two from now, and we have to change it, we'll change it. For now, this should be adequate.
Any questions for George?
I got a question with regard to the FOIA requests. Have any other townships been FOIA'd by this group? You don't know? Okay. Just asking.
Don't know.
Any other questions? Okay. Highway Commissioners' report, Art.
It's been kind of slow. We really don't have anything to add since last report, unless anybody got any questions?
Any questions for Art? Okay. All right. Thank you, Art. Can I have a motion to approve the elected official monthly reports? Monthly reports as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Ingraffia.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Keenly. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. No correspondence under old business, item one, the 2019-2020 tentative budget for Town Fund, General Assistance and Sewer. I will go through the Town Fund budget first. You have four. Just for clarification, the Town Fund General Assistance will be, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of something else. Never mind. So we'll go through, yeah, we'll go through those just systematically, one by one. Town Fund, then General Assistance, and Sewer, and then we'll move on to the tentative budget. So, all right. So I would just say if anybody at the conclusion of each section of the budget, starting with Town Fund, if anybody has any suggested changes, please let me know, and we will kind of go from there. And I'm not, unless someone wants me to go line by line, I'll talk about kind of just the top-line numbers. So for revenue in Town Fund, we are budgeting $2.4 million, six, 200, 2 point, I'm sorry, $2,463,471. And the property tax, interest income, and all other sources of revenue are placed on each line item there. Any questions about the revenue for Town Fund? Okay. All right. Under expenses, for administration, where you have the telephone, utilities, travel expenses, training, community recognition, passport services, and community outreach, the proposed budget is $45,000. Any questions or proposed changes there? Under contractual services. Okay. Hold on. I'll check that. I'm going to go back here. Sorry. Under contractual services, the total for that portion of the budget is $410,500. Any questions or proposed changes to that portion of the budget? Okay. All right. Commodities and miscellaneous, proposed budget for that portion is $27,500. Questions or proposed changes? Capital outlay for, capital outlay, so you have food pantry, truck, equipment, Landmire Building, youth services, Lincoln Martha, that's the pumping station, general landscaping, Any proposed changes or questions on that segment of the budget? Daycare agency expenses, those line items have been zeroed out like last year. Personnel expenses in Town Fund totaling $722,747. Any proposed changes or questions there? All right. Okay. The assessor's budget. Connie, I will turn that over to you. If you'd like to, I can go through it, or feel free to, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'll give you the option. Assessor's choice. Okey-dokey.
Obviously, you've been aware of the communications that have gone back and forth via email as to Supervisor Sweeney's suggestion and my proposed budget. First of all, let me explain to you that if, in fact, you were to seriously consider Supervisor Sweeney's proposed budget with projections from December until the end of this fiscal year, we would already be over that budget. And that does not take into consideration the triennial reassessment. First of all, that reassessment, that is a 60-day period that will cost us approximately $40,000 in staff salary, temporary workers, and overtime. Now, I would love to tell you that I was over-budgeting for that, but I will also tell you that if you look at the statistics that we've provided for you in the last several years, that during a year of the triennial reassessment, our appeals go up by 50 percent. Now, if our appeals are going up by 50 percent, then obviously the man-hours that are going to be needed to accomplish that in an efficient and in a manner that will not have our taxpayers waiting in inordinate lines has got to be addressed. So even though my budget is only looking for an increase of $8,500, I would hope that you would realize that the people and the services that are rendered by this department are the one service in this township that actually saves the taxpayer money. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Connie? Okay. Yeah, I think, like I said, Connie pointed to my remarks, my recommendation. I don't see the projections based on what I've seen in reaching anywhere near the $230,000, and especially not necessitating another increase. As I laid out in my proposal, there's a, two years ago, there's a 30 percent increase in her budget. And-
Did you want to address that about health care then?
Okay. No, no.
That's a line item that was transferred that was never there before.
Okay. See, I explained all this two years ago, explained it last year, I explained it in my proposal. The overall increase in the budget was about 42 percent. About 30, that, so that encompasses the money we moved over. The actual net of new expenditures was, the increase in the budget of new spending was 30 percent.
That encompassed new employees.
Right. So that, that's a, and I appreciate the segue. So the segue was that the new employee was supposed to solve all of this additional work, won't need the part-time staff as much or at all, will take on all of this responsibility. That, what I'm not getting, what I just don't understand is this enormous increase in the budget two years ago, which should have satisfied any office for a four-year term. Now, two years later, we're talking another 4 percent. Now, we're, so we're compounding on top of that, and I just don't see the end in sight, right? The third full-time employee was supposed to solve all of these problems we heard about. But it's always more, right? We don't see, we don't see an increase during the triennial and a decrease after. It's always, we're more busy, we're more busy, need more money, busy, 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 and I get that, okay? So I wasn't happy about the third full-time employee, still not happy about it. I don't think the cyclical nature of the assessor's office necessitates a third full-time employee. I will point, I will point to the fact that the assessor's office, how much, I wanted to ask you, I forgot to ask, in the scanning project that you did for your office, how many, how much of that scanning was done specifically by your three full-time employees? Not outside help? When your outside help left, how much of the scanning did you have left?
Interesting. My deputy assessor, Ryan White, took those numbers. Had I known that that question would have been asked, to pull them out, I would have been happy to give them to you.
And I understand it's an unfair question, unfair, I'm kind of surprising you. So would it be fair to say that it was 50 percent or more? The reason I ask is, I think it points to the cyclical nature of the assessor's office. The three full-time-
It was not a special project.
Right, right. But the third, the third full-time, the three full-time employees had a significant amount of time to be able to scan a lot of documents in the assessor's office, which was a special project, not within their normal duties. So if they have the time to be able to do that, okay, that's saying that they didn't have, they weren't busy for eight hours every day to address, to engage in the other responsibilities of the office. And that's not to say they don't work hard when it's busy, that's not to say they didn't do a great job with the scanning project. My point is that there's peaks and there's valleys, and we cannot budget with the idea that it's 12 months of peak time, because it's just not true. I can't, I can no longer, I mean, I haven't for a long time, but I need this board to realize that for so long, the assessor, Connie is trying to tell me that my eyes are lying to me, that what I experience in the assessor's office, coming in on a very regular basis, is that I'm not supposed to believe what my eyes are telling me, that it's busy, non-stop, every day, all day, and there's just more work to be done constantly. And at the end of the day, we've all seen it. I pointed it out. The underspending of the budget is significant, there's a pattern of it, and either the budget's going to mean something, and it's going to be a useful tool to manage the operation, or it's just a useless exercise in futility. Is the budget going to match the operation, like I've tried to do in all other aspects of the budget and the operation, or are we just going to say, whatever, we can just pad these budgets to kingdom come, and we won't care because, you know?
Can I, can I get just a little clarification on this? Maybe Mike or, and maybe this is an unfair question, I don't know, but it appears that the assessor's office always manages to return a certain amount of money that they've budgeted for from year to year. Does that include those years that we've had a triennial? Has the budget, has money come back from the budget, even on years, even on years that we've had triennials?
Yes.
We've run close on those years, but we've been appropriately budgeted, and you've agreed to that budget. The fact of the matter is that although we are cyclical, as far as, right now, we're very busy with exemptions, senior and senior frees. We'll move on to the disabled and the veterans exemptions. As I mentioned to you, I've been informed that we'll be open in April for our triennial where our appeals start coming in. But every year, we have 60 days of appeals. Those are always very, very busy times. And you're right, we do peak at those times, but to say that we're doing nothing after that's crazy. We're doing permits, we're doing sales, we're doing-
Over the next 10 weeks, eight weeks, whatever is left on the budget cycle.
12.
Um.
If you're going off of the December, if you look at the December expenditures and you multiply that by three to what we've already spent, then we're already over Supervisor Sweeney's suggested budget.
That assumes a consistent burn rate over 12 months, which just isn't true. It's not true in any, it's not true in any operation.
And again, is the next, I figure 10 weeks.
Okay. Well, the last figures we have are December 31st.
Are the, are the, the triennial, the triennials aren't coming within the next 10, 12 weeks?
The triennial, if the schedule is to be believed, will not take effect until after this fiscal year concludes.
The number on expenditures for 18, 2018, 19, 173, 25802, and maybe I'm wrong, I thought there was, I thought there would be 10 weeks left. If we spread that out over the 10 weeks, you should be returning to us somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000.
We would be under budget by $10,000.
Okay. And if you're under budget by $10,000, isn't that then more than the 4 percent that you're asking for?
No, but the 10 percent then, you know, that represents last year. We're talking about the increase in traffic for the coming fiscal year.
But you're only asking for, you're asking for less than 4 percent, about 4 percent?
About 3.8, I believe.
Yeah, something like that. That $10,000 is more than what you're asking for. It's already a part of the budget. What you're asking for over, based on $230,000, is already a part of the original $230,000 budget. You're not going to spend that money. The assumption is you're not going to spend that money. We'll make the assumption, okay?
I would hope not to spend that money. However-
The money's already there.
If we left it at $230,000, you could say that, yes, but to, as Supervisor Sweeney said, draconianly cut it, you're going to be reducing hours and services to our taxpayers. Now, that's a choice that you're going to have to make. I'm not going to have to defend it because it's not within my purview, but you do have to understand that we have a lot of people that are going to be incredibly unhappy with this triennial, and we're going to have to adapt to it. And unfortunately, that means man-hours.
I have a question.
One second. I just wanted to clarify, since you said, I did not, my proposal of $204,000, I did not characterize as a draconian cut.
Oh, I think it was in the email.
I'll get to it. It said, at first blush, it might be considered draconian until you look at the last several years and look at the underspending of your budget and the fact that it's more in line. I said that it might appear draconian at first. I did not characterize it as draconian.
Well, I choose to.
And that's fine, but I just, I didn't say that.
Sue Ellen?
Go ahead, Sue Ellen.
Yeah, I just had a question now. If I read it correctly, there's one employee that is not taking health care right now?
That's correct. One of my employees chose to go on her husband's, however, after even just a limited period of experiencing that health care plan, she's seriously considering of going back on to that township plan when the renewal period comes up.
We can tackle, and we could tackle that when we get here. I mean, just something else, I mean, we're kind of, for all the what-ifs, we can't budget all the what-ifs.
Well, no. Basically, it speaks to the fact that we're looking to possible expenses that should be accommodated. Now, the one thing I find rather humorous, in a sort of dark way, is that I actually return money. I don't spend it if I don't need it. It goes back into the Town Fund. So it is not wasted, it is not aerosolled, and it is not incinerated. It goes back into the Town Fund. But I would certainly encourage you to take seriously the fact that our numbers are going to be up by 50 percent for a 60-day period. It's going to take my staff, my temporary part-timer, and it's also going to take temporary staff that I have to pay to accommodate our taxpayers. Now, we're open from 9:00 to 4:00, but I'm here to tell you, we don't get out of here at 4:00 during a reassessment or an appeals period. That staff is here until 5:00, 6:00 o'clock at night, and if we do four outreach programs, they're here until 9:00 o'clock at night with a one-hour break. They need to be paid. Now, I do intend to try and rotate staff so that we do not exceed a 40-hour work week so that I don't have to pay time and a half, but that's all been taken into consideration.
Do you have any large expenditures coming up that-
I don't know. We're moving, and so I really don't know.
Well, the move is going to be covered under the proceeds of the sales. So I'm asking for your office specifically, are there any big expenditures you have coming up in the next, in the remainder of this fiscal year?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. And when the, then the tax bills came out, this most recent round of tax bills, was it foreseeable that your office would be busy?
The tax bills will be due and payable March 1st. They'll go out probably February 1st. We will be extraordinarily busy. As we are busy now.
Busy, busy, the fact that you were busy now, was that foreseeable?
That's why it's taken into consideration with the budget.
Well, I'm just curious, if it was foreseeable that you'd be busy now?
We are busy now through at least mid-May.
Okay. So why, why was it that one of your full-time employees was on vacation during what you would recognize as a busy time, and then we had to pay the employee plus pay part-time staff? Like, that's, I'm trying to get to, so I remember, and someone could correct me if I'm wrong, the point of the third full-time person was to do two things. Eliminate the need or drastically reduce the need for the part-time staff. It was also to cover vacations for people. So number one, I would say that if there's going to be times where you're your peak season, you shouldn't allow vacations. But even if you did, the point, the other part of that third full-time person was to cover vacations.
Okay, well, here's a-
We're not doing any, the third, I don't understand what the hiring of the third full-time person has accomplished. I don't see it.
I know you don't, and that's really terrifying. However, to cover the point that he just made on vacations, there are oftentimes, other than when exemptions or tax bills are out, that when we're open for appeals or whatever, we don't know when those times are. Those are totally directed by the county and at their whim and at their discretion. I cannot say, well, I'm sorry, we can't let you go on vacation until we know, because there are times we don't know until 24 hours before whatever the county's doing. We've got to be able to function on a dime, which is why we have got to have that flexibility.
All right. You mentioned that at some particular point in time, your workload will increase by 50 percent. Is that during the triennial?
The two appeals periods. If you go back in the records for the appeals that we filed, between non-tri-years and tri-years, our numbers are up by 50 percent during a tri-year. Because the new model is coming out from the county on reassessment, I've been told to expect- to expect, the county has told me to expect, to see inordinately higher numbers.
Is this, is this a triennial for?
This is a triennial. This is why this budget is important, because if we don't have sufficient funds to stay open and service our taxpayers as they deserve to be serviced in a prompt manner and as conveniently as possible. We have four outreach programs, primarily not only to accommodate people on an educational basis, but to make sure that people who have a difficult time getting in here during normal business hours are accommodated. So we try and also, depending upon the sheer numbers, do appointments on Saturday. And that is by appointment only because we would never know when we would be getting out of here. So from that standpoint, there is a flexibility you simply must take into consideration.
If that's the case in the triennial, would you anticipate, let's say this budget, this increased budget, 238.5, was approved, would you anticipate bringing the budget back down to 230,000 or less in the next fiscal year?
That's indeed possible. The fact of the matter is, it depends on, using that wonderful word draconian, exactly how much these assessed values go up. We have found that when it's been substantial, that the second year, we see a lot of people, it falls off in the third year. But yes, I would be comfortable with removing $8,500 next year if in fact I foresaw a decrease in our taxpayers coming in.
If, if, even with the additional $8,500, there's always the possibility that you could go over budget because you need to provide the services.
That's correct.
You can come back to the board, though, can't you, and ask for an increase in the budget? Am I, am I wrong about that?
You can revisit the budget and pass new budget resolutions, absolutely.
Well, I, that's really very reassuring, except for the fact it gives me very little latitude to plan. Now, one of the things that you have to take into consideration is we are extremely fortunate in that we have two associates who come in during peak times to assist us. And I've already put them on notice because I have been given a heads-up and tried to have them, you know, look at their calendars and blank it out so that we can count on them for their assistance. But it's at that point, I have to look at that budget and say, hey, you know what? I can't do this. We're just going to have to, you know, muddle through and be unhappy with the fact that we can't give the service that we would like to give.
Based on assumptions, and we all know what that does.
Mm-hmm.
At 238.5, you're probably going to return some money to us.
I would hope to, because I don't-
Why not, why not, why not stay at 230? And then if there is a problem, come back and let's revisit the budget.
I can live with that, Mr. Graffia.
All right. Any other questions for Connie?
Just one on that health care question again. If someone wanted to add health care, that would be something she could come back to the budget, to us about the budget too.
That is, at any point in time, the board can always revisit and approve new budget resolutions, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And even if the budget goes through a 200, what's your recommendation, 204,000?
204,000.
204,000, even if it goes through a that, you can still come back and we can revisit the budget.
Yep.
That would not allow me to do my job properly.
Okay. Any other questions for Connie? All right. If you have your pens ready, this is what I'm recommending, since I figure the, the next logical question is how I break things out. Based on previous expenditures, I'm going to go line by line in the assessors' budget. This is how I got to the 204,000. In equipment, 2,500. Equipment maintenance, 1,500. Telephone, 1,500. Utilities, 1,500. Travel expenses, 5,000. Training, 5,000. Printing and publishing, 1,500. Professional services, 3,000. Audit, 1,000. Dues, 1,000. Office supplies, 2,000. Miscellaneous expenses, 500. Postage, 1,000. Sidwell maps, 1,000. Staff salaries, 138,000. Employee insurance, 18,000. Employer FICA, 11,000. Employer IMRF, 9,000. And on that note, we're, we're going to be dropping several percentage points of, of what we have to pay. And it's worth noting, that budgeted line item is coming down, even in Connie's proposal, 5,000. So, you know, it's a significant portion. So that's how I got to the 204,000.
The staff salaries was originally budgeted at 150,000.
Right. A proposed budget was 150,000.
Proposed budget, I'm sorry.
Current year budget, 140,000, yeah.
And you're recommending what in that line?
138.
Okay, why are you recommending 138?
Because I had it at 135, based on what I had seen as, what I anticipated, what I projected, what I saw as a pretty accurate projection of where I saw salaries to come. And then, because, because-
That's not taken into consideration, the-
I can just finish my thought and then I'll let you speak. So the fact that we're going to be, have, have to move part-time salaries, part-time staff salaries into that line item, I added in 3,000 to there as the, as the buffer. So as, you know, if, if that's needed. So that's, um, so, and I will just say, actual expenditures, I mean, when we're looking at actual expenditures in 2017, 2018, okay? So that was, 2017, 2018 was the big jump, right? From, from, to $238,000 budget. We're, we're looking, I think it's a, you know, you say the, the salaries line, that's ridiculous, but the 130, the 135, I think, if I'm doing the math correctly, is a 14.4% increase in staff salaries over two years. I mean, so the mon, the money's there, it's going to be underspent, the 140,000 budget in the current year is going to be underspent. So, you know, that, that's how I have it. Like I said, I, I don't want this to be a game, a cat and mouse games of I'm returning money if I don't need it. That's, at that point in time, I've said it from, I've thought it from the days I was a clerk, and I, and I've said it since the day I, I became supervisor. If we are just putting numbers down and saying, well, this could happen, this could happen, and I got plenty of money budgeted just in case, and I'm going to return money, the budget becomes a useless piece of paper. All I'm trying to do is have this reflect the operation. And I'm happy to say, you come back, Connie comes back, if this is passed, I should say, and I'm wrong, I'm happy to say it. I'm happy to admit, I'm happy to recognize it. I've said I was wrong before, I'll say it again. But at the end of the day, we need to start seriously considering having an entire budget that reflects the operation. Because honestly, i, if I'm wrong, we're going to, we're going to be able to pinpoint as to why. And we're going to be able to recognize where we went over, why we went over, and by how much. When it's budgeted like this, you can't tell, because every line item is padded, every line item is padded to the hilt. So how can you, how can you understand the operation when you're underspending most, if not all, line items and the overall budget significantly? That's my, that's my point. We need to understand and, and have the budget reflect as best we can the actual operation.
So you would, you would, excuse me, you would be looking at this as a learning experience?
Well, well, based on experience, based on experience of the pattern over the last several years. I mean, these, these aren't, these are educated guesses based on patterns that I've seen in underspending the budget and projections of where we're currently at.
If the assessor's budget was at 230,000 for this year, would the line items be the same as they're listed for 1819?
Um, I-
Or they might need to be adjusted?
They were adjusted for my proposed budget. The one thing about reducing what may seem like insignificant items like telephone and printing and publishing, those go to the heart of our communication with our taxpayers, our robocalls, telephone, and our email system.
But I'm not, I'm not doing that, but, but look at the numbers. I'm not doing that. I'm, I'm not doing this, I'm not doing this blind. It looks like you're going to, you budgeted current year, $2,000 for printing and publishing. It looks like you're going to spend approximately, maybe up to $1,000. So instead of just staying at $2,000, you budgeted 2,500. Budgeted 2,000, going to spend 1,000, so you take that budgeted line item to 2,500? It makes no sense whatsoever. To me, to anybody that does budgeting whatsoever, it makes no sense.
This is getting to be nonsensical. First of all, yes, from what you see right now, but we just sent out an email, we just sent out a robocall. We're going to do another one, and we're doing more and more to keep our taxpayers informed. Therefore, more time, more expense. However, because it's a very cost-effective program, we get thank-you notes for thanking us for keeping them informed of where we are in the tax cycle. So yes, I anticipated more robocalls, I anticipated more email blasts, because it's going to be important particularly in this cycle.
Any other questions for Connie? So you'll have my, you, you have my numbers and we can, when we get to the end of it. Now this, I'm, I'm drawing a blank. Is this going to be passed as one, Town Fund General Assistance and Sewer is one budget resolution, right?
Generally, yes.
Yes, that's what I thought. I'm just drawing a blank right now. So we'll talk through the rest and, and go from there. So, all right, social services, is it next week we anticipate getting the applications back?
Uh, to, to, early in February.
Early February, okay. So the question becomes, do you want to keep the budgeted numbers from last year as placeholders or not?
Are we going to have a meeting to go over those numbers once we get the applications?
Um, well, yeah, we're going to have the fin, final budget meeting. We can have a meeting in between to get those numbers, so-
I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we can do that. But for our purposes, do we want to put the numbers from last year as placeholders?
I'm fine either way, as long as we know we're going to go through it sometime.
Yeah, we'll go through it. Does anybody have any objection to that?
No.
Okay.
So then the, the numbers will just transfer over as placeholders rather than zeros?
That is correct. That is correct. All right. Going down to bike safety, total budget of 54,000, okay? That's, it's just broken out here. I'm sorry. That was bike safety, 54,000. Senior and disabled bus service was 148,000. Okay, that includes, new from last month, a $80,000 in for the new bus. Right now, Ellen, which would be our senior bus driver, along with Paul and myself, we're right now putting together a plan, a proposed plan, a capital replacement plan to present to the board to basically outline capital outlay based on useful life of the buses, based on if we were just, right now, I mean, doing research, it looks like seven years for our buses is kind of standard useful life. One bus is about three years past that, one is about seven years in, and one has another year to go. So this is something that's been a long time coming, that we need to just plan for so that we don't consistently have, at least in my estimation, we have money set aside specifically for that purpose, so we can all keep the buses in good repair.
What, like what size bus are you planning to get next? How many passenger?
Um, that 80,000, I believe, was that the 12-passenger, I think, was the next one? Was it, yeah, the 12? This one was, the, the one that's three years past what would be considered a useful life is the 12-passenger.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any questions or proposed changes on bike safety or senior and disabled transportation? All right. All right. Youth services, proposed budget total, 359,500. Any questions or proposed changes there? Okay. All right. So for Town Fund, total revenue of $2,463,471. Total expenses, $3,886,997. All right. Any questions or any other proposed changes? All right. Okay, we'll move on to General Assistance. Okay, in revenue, we are looking at proposed, that's not it, $464,714. Okay, under expenses, $43,200. Staff salaries and tax and benefits is 270,500. Any proposed changes or questions about that? Home relief, proposed $267,000. And program expenses, miscellaneous client expenses, employment center totaling 14,600. For total revenues of $464,714, $595,300. And any questions or proposed changes on the General Assistance budget? Okay. And sewer. Revenues proposed, $102,250. Expenses of the bond, accounting services, legal services, engineering and chemical testing, $69,200. Office supplies, maintenance and capital expenses totaling $177,350. Salaries, FICA, IMRF, $3,650. Total revenues, $102,250. Total expenses, $250,200. Any questions about the sewer budget? So before we move on to the tentative road district budget, anything else we want to go back and talk to from the Town Fund, General Assistance, and Sewer? Any action anybody wants to take? All right. I am going to propose the approval, I'm going to make a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 tentative budget for Town Fund, General Assistance, and Sewer with the changes in the assessor's budget that I had proposed. Is there a second?
I will second.
You're talking a change to 204,000 for this?
That is correct.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee and Graffia. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Saturn?
No.
Trustee Nurdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
And Supervisor Sweeney?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to the 2019-2020 tentative budget for the road district. Art, I'll give you the floor to propose your budget.
Okay, proposed budget for this year, revenues, which would be interest income, property tax, miscellaneous income, and personal replacement. We're proposing $355,000. Expenses, which would be insurance, utilities, legal services, office supplies. We are proposing $81,700. Salaries with insurance and benefits, we're proposing $121,200. Road maintenance, rental, repairs, oil, gas, maybe whatever we need, supplies. We're proposing $993,000. Road maintenance on vehicles, equipment and vehicles and equipment, we're looking at $37,500 proposed. Total revenues, which would be $355,000. Total expenses would be $1,233,400, which would be proposed to minus $878,400.
Okay, any questions for Art?
Art, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Trustee Saturn?
Okay, I just had to, one is the salaries, there's an increase of 39,000. What is that for?
I believe that is for Wayne, who is, was being paid from Town Fund for the building maintenance, half his salary, and the other half from the highway department since he was working on the buildings. There is no longer going to be doing that because they brought in that Mario to do that. So he's basically for this year going to be paid just from road and bridge.
So the 87,000, that's Wayne's salary?
Right.
Okay. And my other question, just on the road maintenance increase, that's the big project you're doing, right?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that from the money that was lent to you from the township?
I do believe that's part of it, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions for Art? Okay. All right, any proposed changes to Art's budget, to the highway commissioner's budget? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the 2019-2020 tentative budget for the road district?
Oh, moved.
Moved by Trustee Ingraffia. Seconded, seconded by Trustee Nurdowski. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn?
Aye.
Trustee Nurdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney?
Aye.
Okay, no new business, no executive session matters. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, move.
All right, well, we'll give it to Trustee Saturn. All right, Trustee Saturn?
Second.
Second, Trustee Nurdowski seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.